It's your local government at work. Live from City Hall in downtown Warren, this is the Warren City Council Meeting on CelineRiverChronicle.com.
We thank you for blessing us. We ask for your forgiveness of our sins. We ask you to guide us in all our decisions that we might make. This is our sincere statement. Amen.
May we remain standing and face the flag in our allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you see it? Madam Clerk, if you call a room.
Alvin, George, here.
Primo.
Alvin Mosley. Alvin Henderson. Here. And Alvin Roberts.
Here. Note that we do have a core and present of Alvin and Mosley and Alvin and Rick both called in and they're both ill. We need item four is approval of minutes that you had in your packet.
I move that we are two minutes for December 10th. Thank you.
We have a motion by Alvin Henderson, second by Alvin Fulton, Alvin Burke, she's pointing at Alvin Burke, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Here none in all in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four and two missing. Madam Clerk, you recognize to present financial statement.
The balance in the general fund, December 31st, is three hundred and two thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and three cents. Year-to-date revenues, two million, five hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and six dollars and two cents. The yearly expenditures are Department of Aspala's administrative, two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-six cents. Law enforcement, one million, forty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. Fire, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Sanitation, five hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and six tenths cents. Building codes, forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and two cents. District court, seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Municipal building, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and nine hundred and ninety cents. Recreation, one hundred and forty-four thousand, seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. Cultural center, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Army Neighborhood Center, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and five cents. Other, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Year-to-date total, two million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. And it's increased for the year, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents. The balance in the street fund, December 31st, is two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Year-to-date revenues, five hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Expenses, five hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. And we were down for the year, five thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. The balance of the other accounts, December 31st, was one million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Year-to-date revenues, four million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents. Transfers out of the expenditures, four million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And that's a decrease for the year of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and seventy-three cents. You should have a copy of the project report in your packet also.
Need a motion to approve the financial statement.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the financial statement as presented by the city clerk. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four and two missing. All right, what carries? Madam Clerk, you recognize.
Okay, in the city sales and use tax, December, where you say sixty-one thousand, seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Year-to-date total is seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents. And we were down compared to last year, seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. County tax, where you say forty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Year-to-date total is five hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And we're about three thousand back from last year. You should have a copy of the district court clerk's report for November. And we also have the Old Town Report and the payroll recap for 2012. You have any questions on this?
I have a question as it relates the insurance. What is the difference from?
Insurance?
Yes. In my share as to what we will be required to take this upcoming year.
Well, you only have an increase in the beginning in January. It's less three, four oh five, now it's four. Can't remember exactly that, but we're paying about fifty dollars per month.
Fifty-four.
Per month.
For each employee.
For each employee. Fifty dollars per employee.
Per month?
Yes.
It all relates to, as you're aware, that we're paying out more for health claims and taking in the premium.
Yeah, and I mean, that's just standard if your claims are higher.
Same with workers' comp. Any other discussion?
Do we have a part of your workers' comp claims?
No. It just works the same.
Oh, okay.
You pay more out. That was my point. It went down. Workers' comp actually decreased.
Let's base on your experience, right?
Yes. Public comments? We have Alvin, any Alvin recognizing back?
I just wanted to make one observation, that last, last month, I voted on that budget, and I voted no. And that was something that I punted about, and I had no problem with the budget. But my problem was that they want to listen to you add to Mrs. Henderson. The problem I had was the one percent. I know that's something that has been annually done, but I was just looking at where it would be more beneficial to the employee, to the employees of the city, if it would be towards insurance or whatever. And so that's my reason for doing that. And sometimes you get caught up in making decisions, but that's the reason why I did that. But I would never want to make sure that the city is not meeting all its obligations. But I just had a problem with if it would be more beneficial for the one percent to if they had nothing else to give, it would go towards insurance some more that would be beneficial for the employees.
I would appreciate your comments. We have in the past given two percent and one percent, and the committee and council agreed that this one percent would move forward and that it would be some assistance to the employees. However, we did not know, we could not predict what Congress was going to do as it related the tax issue.
Sure.
But we appreciate your comments. And we certainly knew that you did not want to shut down city services and garbage pickups and employees protection, et cetera.
That would be the case, and like I said, it was something that I really, you know, I would say if you made a mistake, I made a mistake, but I just had a problem with that because I see, as we was talking about today, the insurance paychecks of folks now has increased.
Okay, now, that fifty dollars that Jeanie mentioned is what the city is paying. The employees is what, somewhere around?
There's just run up a few dollars.
Couple of dollars, between two to four dollars, what you say?
Somewhere in there.
Okay.
And how many employees do we have that's on the?
It should be around forty.
Forty, okay. So the forty times the fifty dollars as to what the city is actually paying.
Okay.
And we're paying ninety percent of the employees' insurance. Unless that's changed?
No.
Okay, well, that was the main reason, I just wanted to express that.
Which is really better than what some cities and other agencies do for employees, but we will certainly look at every option, just as I mentioned in the report, that we had met on five different occasions, and it wasn't like a thirty-minute or a fifteen-minute meeting. We would be here sometime past six o'clock, six-thirty, working. But we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anybody sign in, Helen?
No.
Mayor's report? You have the B.C., E.D.C. financial report in front of you. And Arkansas Energy Code ordinance, I put that in the packet. At this time, I'm going to recognize Mr. Mayor to kind of explain this ordinance. Mike, if you'd come forward, you can explain what we're trying to do here.
Well, November of 2012 was the first that I was aware that we were required to have this ordinance, and that came in the form of this town, City and Town Magazine, there was an article in there, and I'm going to kind of paraphrase what it said, that Arkansas Energy Code shall be adopted by ordinance by December 31st of 2012. And also says that if it's not adopted, that the city or the mayor, whoever, will have to write a letter to them and explain to them why it hasn't been adopted. Basically, what it states is that the city or town of the first or second degree that accepts funds for doing building inspections shall have this energy code adopted. Now, the city of Warren has already adopted the International Building Code, and this energy code is basically taken from the International Building Code. So we're doing this regulation anyway. The only thing that I can think that the state would mandate this is probably, there's a lot of municipalities and cities out there that don't have the International Building Code adopted, and they are doing building inspections, and they don't have any type of organization as far as what their minimum standards are, so these are basically minimum standards for energy-efficient homes, and like I say, it's a redundant ordinance, basically, because we already do it anyway.
Any questions for the Building Code person? Thank you, Mayor. All right, this time, we have ordinance, it'll be ordinance eight, seven, three, and the floor, the chair will entertain a motion to put it on its first reading. Second, motion by Alvin Fulton, second by Alvin Burke, to place order eight, seven, three on its first reading. Any discussion? Here none in all in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four and two missing. Motion carries. Ordinance eight, seven, three, it's on its first reading. An ordinance providing minimum energy standards for the design of new buildings and structures or portions and additions to existing buildings that provide facilities or shelter for public assembly, education, business, mercantile, institutional, storage, and residential occupancies, as well as those portions of factory and industrial occupancies designed primarily for human occupancy by regulating their exterior, this is crazy, their exterior envelopes and the selection of their HVAC, service water heating, electrical distribution, and illuminating systems and equipment for effective use of energy. Now therefore be ordained by the Warren City Council of the City of Warren, Arkansas, that section one, adoption of the energy code, is hereby adopted by the City Council of Warren, Arkansas for the purposes, for the purpose of establishing rules and regulations for energy-efficient standards for new building construction. This code known as the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code, being particularly the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code addition thereof and the whole thereof, save and accept such portions as are herein after deleted, modified or amended, of which not less than three copies of this ordinance, as well as three copies of the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code, have been and are now filed in the offices of the clerk and building codes of the City of Warren. And the same ordinance is hereby adopted and incorporated as fully as if set out at length herein and from the date on which this ordinance shall take effect. The provisions thereof shall be controlling in the construction of all buildings and structures therein contained within the corporate limits of the City of Warren, Arkansas. Section two, inconsistent ordinances repealed. Ordinances are parts thereof enforced at the time that the ordinance shall take effect, if inconsistent herewith, are hereby repealed. Section three, an emergency clause. Where it is of the utmost urgency that the City of Warren, Arkansas, have an up-to-date energy code to protect the citizens of our city, therefore an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate protection of the public shall take effect immediately unless passed and approved. Chair will entertain a motion to place ordinance eight, seven, three on its second reading.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number eight, seven, three on this second reading.
Second.
Motion by Alvin Henderson, second by Alvin Fulton, suspend the rules and place ordinance eight, seven, three on its second reading. All in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four and two missing. Ordinance eight, seven, three, an ordinance providing minimum energy standards for the design of new buildings and structures or portions and additions to existing buildings that provide facilities or shelter for public assembly, education, business, mercantile, institutional, storage, and residential occupancies, as well as those portions of factory and industrial occupancies designed primarily for human occupancy by regulating their exterior envelopes and the selection of their HVAC, service water heating, electrical distribution, and illuminating systems and equipment for effective use of energy.
I move that we suspend the rules and place order number eight, seven, three on this third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Alvin Henderson, second by Alvin Fulton, to place it on its third and final reading, be ordinance eight, seven, three. Any discussion? Here none in all in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four and two missing. Ordinance eight, seven, three on the third and final reading. An ordinance providing minimum energy standards for the design of new buildings, structures, or portions and additions to existing buildings. That provide facilities or shelter for public assembly, education, business, mercantile, institutional storage, and residential occupancy, as well as those portions of the factory and industrial occupancies designed primarily for human occupancy by regulating their exterior envelopes and the selection of their HVAC, service water heating, electrical distribution, and illuminating systems and equipment for effective use of energy.
I move that we adopt for this number eight, seventy-three.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt ordinance eight, seven, three. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four and two. We have an emergency clause.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Any discussion? Here none in all in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four and none against. Thank you, everyone, for that. We have a commission reappointment who has agreed to serve another term on the Fair Housing Commission, would be Geneva Curry.
And she has been?
We haven't had to meet him, and so it wouldn't be any way to do it. She has agreed to serve.
I move that way, I'll second.
Motion by Alvin, toll-free, second by Alvin Henderson, to appoint Geneva Curry to the Fair Housing Commission for a value return. Any discussion? Here none in all in favor, raise your hand. I see four, four. Motion carries. Thank you. Administrative Standing Committee reports, the police chief has recognized Chief Randy Peet. And you have his report in front of you. Any questions about the report, or questions of Chief Peet? If not, Alvin Fulton, recognize.
Oh, we have no business.
And we do have pretty light, looks like.
Well, I do have one thing that I'd like to share with you. On my report here, it says currently conducting two backgrounds, two backgrounds on two certified officers. We contacted one of those officers that we were conducting the background on, and almost had finished, they have to have a psychological evaluation once we do the paperwork, the background, and he withdrew his application to date. So we have started three additional, two more additional backgrounds besides the one certified. These other two are not certified, but they do good, so anyway, we continue to try to find viable candidates for, to fill these three slots that we have. So that's all I noted to you. Yes, sir?
Your personal protective equipment, that is.
Yes, sir, they're in, and the officers are all wearing them. All the officers have a new vest in. They're a lot more lighter and comfortable. I think they would enjoy. Yes, sir?
Chief, if you went through the whole process, and then, say, for instance, we sent them over to Canada, and we paid for their training, then after we done paid for their training, they decided to resign, are they held accountable for any of the cost of the training?
Yes, they're not. Let me, let me explain how this works. There's a state law that if you go, if we send you through the academy, the City of Warren, or whatever municipality or sheriff's office that does that, if you leave that employment within eighteen months, eighteen months, and go to another agency, it is a percentage that that other agency has to pay the City of Warren. For instance, we send someone through the academy, he goes to work for Fordice six months after, City of Fordice has to pay us mileage, gasoline, all expenses as far as salary benefits, everything that's involved in that training. But after the eighteen months, it's spring and clear, they can go wherever they'd like to. And that's a problem also, because it costs three months at the academy, driving back and forth, I mean, you're talking about a lot of money. That's the, and that is a state law. So, and we have collected from several cities that officers have left and gone to under that law.
I think that was the question, is there personal liability for a private officer?
None, so I see what.
There's no, there's no personal liability at all.
I'm just thinking, some contracts that you sign, and if you go like that, you sign for so many years before you can leave and seek new employment, I just wanted to.
I don't know, that'd be a legal matter for the city attorney. I don't know that, you know, I'm sure there's a possibility that could be a contract, the city could look at the legality of it, of course, you know, depending on what we could do or couldn't do, but.
Just I do.
Right, I understand. Something we've never done to my knowledge, since I've been here.
Anything else? All right, thank you, sir. Our chief, Edward, you recognize. Y'all have his report in front of you, it's in your packet. Since we don't have a chairman of that committee, Mr. Edward, therefore, do you have to say?
Cold, huh? Sweet. I don't think they're playing. I've been down, I've had many serious calls, very quiet, we like it that way. I don't know if the weather change has changed that, but it's been nice.
All right, thank you. There's no report on the fire committee. Sanitation manager, Mr. Mike, I'm about to promote you.
That's a promotion.
Yeah. Sanitation, yeah, it's monthly report, and the chairman of that committee is also ill. And you'll notice that the annual income is behind the expenses by, about nineteen thousand.
We had, if you look down through, our diesel fuel was up nineteen, almost two thousand dollars over what it was last year at the end of the year. Our expenses for hauling our garbage away was up almost fourteen thousand dollars over what it was last year, and that's going to be going up every year under our new contract to forty dollars per ton eventually in five years, so that expense is going to be rising every year. Our landfill expense going to the county where we haul our junk to that we pick up on the side of the road is up four thousand dollars, so those three expenses are twenty-three thousand dollars over what they were last year, so even though we're eighteen thousand dollars under over budget, we're still, if everything had went like it did last year as far as expenses go, we'd be under budget by about thirty, four thousand dollars, so. And also our revenue's down almost two percent, and I don't know whether it was lost at any customers. I have to check to the water department and get a printout on our customer, our revenue's down about ten thousand dollars over this time last year, so. Two percent drop in revenue and two and a half percent rise in expenses is a good gap.
None, you also, any questions for Mike? You also have the Building Code monthly report in front of you.
There was one letter sent out, six hundred, six hundred North Myrtle, haven't gotten response other than from the post office that they did receive the letter, so if we don't have something done within the next little bit, you guys will have the opportunity to look at that property next month at this meeting.
Any questions for the building official?
Thank you, sir. Tommy Adams is ill. And I don't have anything under the monthly report, except they've been cleaning a lot of catch bases, and Alvin Toffrey has recognized.
I had a group of people on the Henry Street, there by Mr. Bryce Clay, about their drainage problem, because they don't seem to have an outlet for their drainage ditch, and I told him I'd ask the foreman, but he's not in, so I'm just.
I'll pass it on, we'll go out and look at Henry Street.
Yeah.
Bryce Clay.
Bryce Clay. He said he'd be watching tonight, so we just make sure we discuss it.
So you're getting it.
All right, brother.
It's due, no, Mr. Toffrey brought it up. All right, street committee, Alvin Burke has recognized.
The only thing I have is set in the street hearing for February, and we can look at the 21st of February at 5:30 for the public street hearing, here in the municipal building.
I think that's the night of the chamber gala, chamber function.
Is that another, is that going to be a conflict this week?
I'm not sure when the chamber gala is, is it on the 21st of February?
Twenty-first.
Okay, what about the?
What time it start at?
Six-thirty.
What time we gonna hold it?
Five-thirty. But we don't want to cause any problems, because it moves into the second Thursday, if that's good.
That would be good.
Second Thursday, February. Five-thirty. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll notify the public. Community and economic development, Alvin Toffrey, we've got, we need to have a discussion on shooting range coming up, and they're finishing the NEPA study, which is an acronym for some kind of environmental study, and we're going to need to work with the game official on getting a timeline, and so your committee's going to need to meet on that.
All right.
And I will bring it, when I get the information, I will bring it to you and your committee.
Just call.
You okay?
Just cracking real bad, I didn't give my medicine, but I'll make it.
Anything, anything under your committee?
Nothing.
Ways and Means Committee, we have Alvin Henderson to recognize.
We do have, under the Ways and Means, to amend the 2012 budget, and we have an ordinance that is in your packet of information, and if you'll give me an ordinance number, please.
Eight, seven, four.
I move that we place ordinance number eight, seven, four on this first reading.
Second. We have a motion by Alvin Henderson, second by Alvin Fulton, to place order eight, seven, We have a motion, Alton Henderson, second Alton Burke, place ordinance eight-seven-four on its first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, raise your hand. I see four-four, none against. This is ordinance eight-seven-four on its first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number eight-six-five of the city of Warren, Arkansas, to amend the budget for the city of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year two, twenty-twelve, appropriating funds for said city budget for other purposes, being ordained by the city council of Warren, Arkansas, section one. Section one of ordinance eight-six-five of the city of Warren, Arkansas, is hereby amended to read as follows, that the following budget for the operation of the city of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year two thousand twelve, being the same as hereby approved, and funds of said amount are hereby appropriated for said purposes and accounts during the year twenty-twelve from time to time as needed. A detailed budget document shall be available in the office of the city clerk for public inspection during record business hours. Non-restricted expenditures, administration, two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-eleven dollars and eighty-six cents. Law enforcement, one million, forty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Fire, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Sanitation, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Building codes, forty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and two cents. District court, seventy-six thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Municipal building, twenty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Recreation, one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. Cultural center, fifty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Army Neighborhood Center, fifteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and five cents. Other, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. For total general expenditures of two million, five-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. Under restricted expenditures, the street department, five-hundred-and-ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. For total restricted expenditure of five-hundred-and-ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Under other accounts, the transfer out of county sales and use tax to the general fund, five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, to the street fund, zero. Transfers out of city sales and use tax to the city sales tax economic development, three-hundred-and-one thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and six cents, to the general account, four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars, to street fund, seventy-five thousand. Transfers out of city Warren direct deposit of state funds to city sales and use tax, seven-hundred-and-ninety thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fourteen cents, to general, ninety-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. County sales and use tax, five-hundred-and-twelve thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Childcare facilities, U.S. Department of Agriculture, one thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Law fee dispersments, seventeen thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. District court expenses, eight thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and seventy cents. U.S. Department of Agriculture with a grant for the emergency service center, three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents. For CED grant to ESC, eighty-seven thousand, turning seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents. For the breathalyzer, five-hundred-and-twenty-seven fifteen. Interfund transfers, thirty-seven twenty-three. Rural Development Trail Grant, thirty-eight thousand dollars. City sales tax economic development, seventy thousand, eight-twenty-six fifty-six. City sales tax economic development to B.C., E.D.C., ninety-five thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, eighty-six dollars. City's, uh, sales tax economic development to Southeast Arkansas Regional Intermodal Facility, thirty thousand. City sales tax economic development to the street fund, seventy-five thousand. City sales and use tax, three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents. The generator account, fixed five thousand, four-eighty-nine. Court automation, one thousand, four-hundred-and-fourteen twelve. Law enforcement, emergency rescue, zero. FAA, um, aviation fund, six-hundred-and-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Marcus, let me see, A.D.E.D. pre-treatment facility, three thousand, eight hundred dollars. Train restoration, zero. Warren shooting range, nine thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. Sidewalk grant to that, from the highway department, zero, was expended. Total other accounts, four million, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and forty-four, forty-seven cents. For a total city budget of seven million, six-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. This ordinance shall be effective on the fourteenth day of January twenty-thirteen, so that timely payment of obligations of the city of Warren may be made, and the same being necessary for the maintenance of the good credit of the city of Warren, and an emergency is hereby declared to exist.
I move that we suspend the rules in place ordinance number eight-seven-four on its third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules in place ordinance eight-seven-four on its third and final reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, raise your hand. I see four-four, none against. Ordinance eight-seven-four, an ordinance amending ordinance eight-six-five of the city of Warren, to amend the budget for the city of Warren for the calendar year twenty-twelve, appropriating funds for said city budget for other purposes.
I move that we suspend the rules in place ordinance number eight-seven-four on its third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion, Alton Henderson, second Alton Burton, to suspend the rules in place ordinance eight-seven-four on its third and final reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, raise your hand. I see four-four, none against. Ordinance eight-seven-four, an ordinance amending ordinance eight-six-five of the city of Warren, Arkansas, to amend the budget for the city of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year twenty-twelve, appropriating funds for said city budget for other purposes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number eight-seven-four.
Second.
Motion, second, to adopt ordinance eight-seven-four. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, raise your hand. I see four-four, none against.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause.
We have a motion to adopt the emergency clause, in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, raise your hand. I see four-four, it's adopted. Anything else, Alton Henderson?
I do, I would just like to, uh, picture the attention, uh, of the alderman, the overtime sheet. If you would just look at, uh, each department as to what the totals are, and look at the comparison of January of twenty-eleven, which was one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cent, compared to January through December of twenty-twelve, one thou, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. So it's not that much difference compared to twenty-eleven, uh, up until, uh, twenty-twelve of December. And then lastly, if you will look at the payroll sheet, uh, Jeannie shared information with us that the insurance did go up fifty dollars per employee per month, and that is two thousand, uh, extra per month, which is an additional twenty-four thousand dollars that the city will be paying for insurance on the employees. And if my math is correct, it looks like somewhere around two dollars and forty cent, uh, for the, uh, the employee it's, themselves are paying. But for the city, each person, uh, fifty dollars, for the employees, times, uh, which is two thousand, times, uh, twelve months, twenty-four thousand dollars in addition. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much. Everyone, turn to the agenda, we have, uh, nine, planning commission, there was no meeting. Aviation, there wasn't a meeting. We have the minutes of water and sewer, and their ballot sheet. And that brings us to the parks and rec, and Mr. Harden is here.
Where you been? Let's see. Uh, I don't really have anything, saying anything, well, getting ready for baseball and softball, and it's kinda cold outside, and that's all I have. Any questions you might have?
Yeah, just for, uh, informational, uh, purposes, what was the response, and I guess I'm speaking to the city attorney, what was the response in case someone gets hurt at the park, whether they're bit by a dog or fall off the train, uh, the liability of the city?
What I found out was that, uh, you know, as long, that the city's basically immune. We do have, if we have a insurance policy or something like that, uh, that may cover some singularities, but I don't think there is any.
Does that include, like, a dog bite or something?
Certainly. Because, again, the city's not doing anything to actively encourage that or provide some sort of attractive nuisance, that sort of thing.
Although we don't have signs up, uh.
I have signs, some, there's no picture of that.
What complex?
Baseball, softball complex.
No, I'm out at the city park.
Oh, okay. I thought you said softball, the park, too, that's what I was.
No, the city park.
Okay.
There are no signs up out there. So if, uh, you know, uh, you at your own risk or nothing like that, that is, uh.
Uh, no, neither.
I don't think, I don't think so.
That answers your question.
Any other questions for Mr. Harden? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. You do the.
You have the housing authority item E, you have the minutes of the meeting in your packet, and under the coffer center report. You will concede the financials on the coffer center, that we did, we are gonna share in some expenses. What we've been having trouble with is the lighting on the stage, uh, area, and we were waiting till we had enough money in our, uh, depreciation account to do some of the repairs. Uh, we have, uh, repaired the lights themselves, but the switching, the switches are in terrible shape, and we have, uh, an electrician that's giving some price on it, and I'm gonna work it out with Mr. Talbot, but we're gonna, I hope, uh, use some of that depreciation money to repair the, uh, uh, electrical part of the lights, uh, before they start their spring concerts. But that's gonna be necessary to do. Uh, we've been holding off till we had the money, they hadn't, and they're not dangerous, but they need to repair them, so we're gonna work on that. It's a backstage thing, you'll never know it, but it certainly needs working on.
The wiring, is that?
No, it's a, oh, there's a whole panel. When that thing was installed thirty years ago, it was a top-of-the-line system, and there's a whole panel of light control. And they're real sophisticated, and they have dimmers and all that kind of, uh, apparatus on. And we're, we're gonna really, uh, simplify that system, because there's so many hands that are manipulating during this production. Uh, there're high school kids that are working on them, and there's teachers, and there, there's no way to really fix, to repair it unless we simplify the system, and that's what we intend to do, at least that's our thinking at this time.
We're still communicating with the school.
Yeah, we're still thrashing that around, but I'm getting, I'm not gonna make any more comments on that. We're still, we have discussions from time to time. In your packet.
But nothing in writing?
Nothing in writing, nothing, just a proposal that, uh, that, that would have agreement, would be structured. Under, let's see, under ten, let me see, what is that, ten, unfinished business, would y'all look at the sign that's in before you? Now, I want y'all to sign off on it before I, uh, proceed. This would be, uh, this is the sign maker's concept of what it would look like. Now, that came off my printer in red, and actually it's, uh.
It's not gonna be red?
No, it's in orange.
I want you to black it.
I think so. That's what I'm trying to get a hold of this afternoon, I said, well, what kind of background are we gonna put this on? But it's gonna be made out of the same metal that a highway department sign's made of. These are the numbers that I did not put on your sheet, and I'd like you to write them down. They can be thirty inches, uh, tall by forty-eight inches wide. And I need y'all's input on this, uh, we're gonna have to do it tonight, but I want you to think about it. Or your next choice is thirty-six inches, uh, tall by sixty inches.
Wow, that's gonna be.
Wide. And the price is not enough really to worry about, it's a hundred-and-fifteen dollars on the first one, and a hundred-and-seventy-two fifty on the second, per sound. Let me give you a little description of the letters, so you'll give you a better idea. On the first sign, line one, welcome to Warren, the letters are three and three-fourths inches tall. On the second sign, the larger one, the letters are six inches tall, and that gives you a kind of an idea. The first sign, boy, I love all this technical stuff, the first sign can be read at a hundred feet. The second one can be read real well at two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Now, the first, they did have an option, that, that, one of the things they put, they were gonna leave off Warren lumberjacks, Arkansas Razorbacks, and Minnesota Vikings, and just put the mascots, but we were gonna get into trademark problems, we're just having mascots. So the sign made a, now, these are suggestions from, uh, Arkansas Sign and Barricade Company, which is a legitimate company, makes, uh, a lot of signs for the Arkansas Highway Department that the Arkansas Highway Department doesn't manufacture themselves. And I think Alderman Toffrey, uh, is gonna propose this, and I would sure like your input on this before we order it. And I think we have maybe another Razorback, you know, this season, and so we might wanna hold off a month or two, whenever the draft is, and just see what happens on that situation. 'Cause we sent three outstanding players up to fail, and two have graduated, which are Jairus and Greg. So that's all I have on that. I'm not gonna pull the trigger till I give you guys all sign off on it. Any problems with thinking about that for a day or two? We have item eleven's called public statements.
Uh, just one other observation is, uh, since we have a, a new congressman in all of them, we need, we need to have some kind of, we don't wanna be, be like the stepchild that children have, so it'd be good if we had some way of some representative of the council that could possibly get in contact with our fourth district. And, uh, see what's, what they, what he plans on doing to help the fourth district, especially Bradley County, and surrounding Bradley County, South Arkansas. Ms. Housen, I mean, you would, that would be a good job, you would, to be a good representative, contacting Mr. Cotton and see if you could do something to make contact.
Are you sure you wanna female to contact, Mr. Cotton?
Can you cut that? Can you cut that? Okay, I'll leave that.
I think it would be an order perhaps for the city.
I, I won't leave that alone, we'll cut that for now.
Actually, no, inviting to Warren to just talk to.
One, I, I visited, uh, with Mayor, um, Harry Brown out of Stevens, you know, Harry, and their group does plan to visit with the newly elected, uh, team that's in Washington. Um, they feel very strong about trying to, uh, establish a relationship. So there, there are cities that's, that's doing what you just said.
Anything else on the burden? We need a motion to pay the bill.
I move that we take bills.
In a second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, raise your hand. I see four-four, none against, motions here. The meeting is, uh, February the eleventh, and we need a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Motion in a second, all of those in favor, stand.